Regular meeting of the Swansea Board of Selectmen for today, February 7th, is called to order.
Make a motion we approve the regular meeting minutes of February 1st.
Second, any discussion on the minutes?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Beverly, if you could note that Paul Shering was at that meeting also.
Who was that?
Paul Shering.
I'm sorry, say it again, please.
Paul Shering.
Oh, yes, okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, any discussion? Michael, any additions?
I had a abatement of veterans credit that are in there for signing.
Put it in?
Yes, it's in the packet. It's not in the packet, it's in the folder.
In the folder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public input, do you have anybody online, Josh?
Just that right now.
Anybody else? EMS Advisory Committee Chair, Stephen Biddle.
We are off to a lively start and I think a rewarding start. We have two last to bring to the board tonight. One is, we have seven enthusiastic members, all of whom bring special things to the committee, and we would request to expand the committee to all people who applied and make the voting members seven, which is a nice odd number, and one non-voting with Julius Peele. And it's rare with a committee when you get this sort of response, and I'd like to recognize it and utilize the people who volunteer and their time.
Consensus would be fine.
You got that?
I have it, yes.
That was easy.
Good to find enthusiasm in members. The second is ambulance billing, which has been a topic that has floated around for a while. The committee strongly feels that the town should begin billing for this service. Had we billed last year, and this is an estimate, we forewent $15,500 of possible revenue. As it's being operated right now, we have marginal cost of essentially zero of responding with the ambulance. The ambulance was obtained via a grant, and as such has no capital cost to the town. When, if, and how it is replaced, then it would have a capital cost that would significantly alter the cost of operating it. As it is right now, the ambulance goes instead of a Yukon. The operational cost of one versus the other is the minimus best. So it's really at no marginal cost unless and until we get into paying people stipends to stand by, and then again, that would not be a huge cost. We reckon, based upon trends, that they'll probably do at least 40 transports this year, up from 31 the prior year, and that would result in about 20,000 of revenue, but we would have cost against it. We'd have about $1,000 initial startup cost, and then the billing service with whom the department has been speaking wants to bill $750 minimum per month, where we intend on talking to them about that. But if that stands, that would be $9,000 a year for a total cost of 10 versus 20 revenue. So still materially profitable to the town. However and wherever the EMS study goes, and I for one really do not know at this time, there are some large questions that have to be answered, we're working towards them, we have members who want to get into the weeds and look at them, but we think that we should do this for now, see how it works, and it'll be one more piece of the puzzle that's there. You can always stop it, and the $750 per month goes away. I personally hope that we're going to do a lot better with this billing service than $750 a month. We would also go look at other billing services, but this service is local, it's in Peterborough, they do virtually everybody around here. They're ethical, they're honest, and they know what they're doing. Medical billing is not a subject for amateurs. You can get into deep trouble billing the government the wrong amounts. So you want to be very careful of the people who you select to do this work. What we're asking for is to authorize the department and with the presence of the EMS committee to go negotiate a contract, bring it back by the end of the month, and present it to the board. That's really all we're asking, this point.
Hey Steve, can I just ask a quick question for the record? What is the name of the Peterborough outfit? Sorry.
The Peterborough service? Oh, I forget it. Chief?
Emax.
Emax, yeah. Oh, I'd have written down.
Thank you.
So that's what we're asking, and I think it's eminently logical. Why leave money on the table and let's find out once and for all whether this thing works? It will or won't?
Do we need the committee to negotiate on behalf of the town, or is that like?
I think we will work with Michael, but I think right now it's on a technical level, and I will look in on it. I have some background in medical finance and billing. But we will use Michael, get some sort of contract, run it through Michael, and then bring it to the board.
When they submit a bill and collect, do they receive a percentage of that?
It's 750 or a percent, and the percent, I believe, is high percent or less. It's not a huge amount.
So if they didn't collect a percentage, if they go on a percentage basis?
If we have billings of over, and this is from memory, $5,000 or $7,000 per month, the 750 goes away. We're not going to hit $5,000 a month. So... But we will hit something, and I can't see why one would not do it. I guess that's where I stand on it.
Just so long as it doesn't affect our contract.
If there were only a lot of transport agencies other than themselves?
I've seen no evidence of that under the current situation, and we're not doing anything other than the current situation. The call card is what it is, and it's currently Deluzio, Swansea, the county, and then Keene. What?
It shouldn't be. The agreement we had with Deluzio was that Keene would be the primary backup.
Apparently that's changed.
No, we need to unchange it. That's right, like that might get involved.
Yeah, Deluzio and the city have a mutual backup agreement, and they cover their contract to towns.
And we don't have that yet with Chester County, that I know of.
I'm told that's what the call card is. I have not investigated it. But it still is Deluzio and then the town. Whoever comes after that, comes after that. So there's nothing that I can see that involves the contract with Deluzio.
I think the main way we would get into trouble with our contract with Deluzio if we got into a situation of call jumping, where because we were getting revenue, we were trying to take calls that otherwise Deluzio would be taking. Not saying that would happen, but I think that's where we would potentially get into an issue with the contract.
Yeah, and let's not speculate about that. I don't see that happening, really. There are plenty of opportunity. There's a shortage of EMS people. The more EMS staff that can actively put even on standby call, the better off the whole area is. And we have a background situation here where we are entering the market, the county, which is by its very structure going to be the high-cost provider. And I think they'll be a very high-cost provider, just given their revenue structure, their manning, and... Manning, I guess it's a dated word, their staffing. So I can't see how the town can possibly lose anything by this. We aren't changing, nor is anybody contemplating right now changing the order under which we're presently operating.
Chief, do you have anything you can add to what's been discussed?
Yeah, as far as, we own the transport when Deluzio is not available. If we have the capabilities to do that, if we had a provider, then we will transport. So which is the numbers that back that up, so we've done that numerous times. Since we have the ambulance, it's roughly around 60 transports, I believe, so for the past three years. As far as the agreement between Keene and Deluzio, from my understanding, and I spoke to Rob Jr. and I spoke to Chief Arquard, there's no money exchange there. They back each other up, and that's fine. I spoke to both heads of those departments, and I spoke to Chief Fay. And for us, it makes, it's a benefit, it makes more sense for the county to come in ahead of Keene. Sometimes Keene's not available, but right here in town, you get a quick response. If we can't get our ambulance out, then they will respond, which just happened yesterday morning. So that's where the order cards, the run card goes, that's where that got changed. So adding county into the response matrix, I have put them ahead of Keene, because Keene is so busy that the county is not at this particular time. If we're going to be calling in mutual aid, ambulances, then we have them available, readily available. But they come after Deluzio, can't respond. If our ambulance is not available to respond, and we need transport, then the county will respond.
Anything else? Is this a motion?
Just coming back to the board anyhow.
Y'all are agreeing that Michael's engaged with you?
Yeah.
You got it?
Okay.
So Michael, is that a consensus? Is that consensus?
Yes, that was consensus.
Thank you.
I got a couple other things to fill the time. Mr. Karasinski.
What am I going to do, 45 minutes? Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Steve, do you want your sheet? Thanks.
It's a souvenir.
What's next, Michael?
Last week, the board considered and tabled a request from the Rail Trail Advisory Committee to either authorize them or authorize the town to send a letter to the City of Keene regarding the central square redesign, so that was tabled from last week for some additional considerations, so I think we at least owe Mr. Klosik an answer.
Okay. Y'all discussed it last week. Do you want to discuss it now?
I wouldn't support the letter as written, but I would support the Rail Trail Advisory Committee submitting the letter on their behalf, but I don't think it should come from the town of Swansea.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
I would concur with my brethren in the city right here.
Mr. Chairman, would you just repeat what Mr. Colby said? I did not hear him.
He concurs with Sly's comments.
Thank you.
Sure. I just... I think it'd be, personally, I think it'd be, personally, I don't think we should weigh in. I know that Swansea gets upset when Keene weighs in, and Keene gets upset when Swansea weighs in. I think as individuals, they should, for certain, take that position. I do agree with your sentiment, but I don't think it should come, I don't think it should be identified with Swansea. That's just a thought there. I don't, I don't really see the connection. I understand what we're doing with our trails and the connector with the bridge, once the bridge gets put in, but then once it gets over the bridge, that's Keene. That'd just be my position. I don't, I don't think it should come in any way from Swansea. Okay, so it's one to one. You're in the middle. What do you pick?
God, I was under the impression, listening to you, that you concurred with both of us.
No, I, no, I don't think it...
We need to clarify.
I could withdraw that idea that the Rail Trail Advisory Committee submitted on their behalf, and they could just do it as people if they wanted, not referencing the Swansea Rail Trail.
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to get to. I guess I clouded it.
Well, you did. No questions asked, you did cloud it. From that standpoint, I don't think it's one to one with one needing to clarify.
Exactly. Now that the bookends have agreed, the book can decide.
I think that if you're, you know, like this. I mean, I, you know, as I said before, I was, I was agreeing with you because I thought you were agreeing with my brethren to the far right.
And then I agree with you.
So therefore, I think we all are in agreement.
You got that, Beverly? We're all in agreement.
I'm not sure I do. You're all in agreement to what?
We support the right of Swansea residents to weigh in with comment. We do not support it coming under the Swansea letterhead.
Does that mean it doesn't come under the RTAC, since RTAC is under the Swansea letterhead?
Correct.
I got it, okay. So it should come from the individual person?
That's correct.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks.
By God, I think we've done it.
We've unmudied the waters?
So a few items under other business, get that out of the way now. I got an email from Bob Hayden with Standard Power that we're getting closer to being ready to go live with Community Power. Couple informational meetings later this month, and they're looking to do a buy on March 1st at noon. He indicated that due to the warmer winter, that the prices are looking more favorable than they have been, so he's feeling that's the best time to buy. Normally, these electricity purchase contracts, I've just kind of done in the course of business, but Community Power is a little bit of a different scale, so I just want to make sure you're aware that we're getting closer and that I had your authorization to sign that agreement when it comes through. Bob's meeting with the Energy Commission and Julius at their meeting next week, so they are in the loop, but it's kind of a sort of thing, the contract comes out, you've got to sign it pretty quick, so we don't necessarily have time to wait for a board schedule. And he's looking for an expected launch date of May 1st.
What about the publicity part of it? Has that, has that already been done, or is it being done?
No, so the public notice and public outreach occurs after we've signed basic signing agreements. That way they can determine what those rates would be and send out that notice. By law, they require, I think, two notices, so that's what outreach does.
So that's what happens in the two-month window between the buy and the go-live date.
Okay, and I missed, what's the go-live date?
May 1st.
What's the, oh, I thought May 1st was when they were going out.
March 1st is the buy, May 1st is the expected go-live.
Great. Anything else?
Yes. I tried to take up some of the time. March 1st, I know the board hasn't set your schedule yet, but March 1st is a Wednesday. We have an interested party, interested in renting the hall, and it's also the night of the City of Keene hosting NHMA for a legislative meeting, so I would ask you to consider not meeting that week so we can do the rental, and for those who would like to can attend the meeting in Keene.
You got it, Green.
Very good, more consensus. And then DPW Director DeRusso got a proposal from Penny Plumbing to address issue with the circulator. It seems to be what's causing, we were having an issue out in the pump house or the garage where the pumps and the cisterns are for the sprinkler system, so it's just over, just under $2,300. Sly reviewed it and could probably explain it better than I could, but...
No, I think it, the last paragraph is pretty explanatory. The way it's plumbed in now, I guess the circulator pump diverts the heat to the second floor and the fire sprinkler room from the first floor. So this way, it'll be like an extra zone, I guess, or fail-safe, so the first floor will get some heat.
Just testing you. So we'd be looking for an authorization to expend up to $2,300 from the Wickham Hall revolving fund.
I'll make that motion, Beverly.
Is it $2,200 or $2,300, Michael? Thank you.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Be looking for a nomination for Matt Stanley as an alternate to the Energy Commission for a two-year term.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And who was that, Michael, please?
Matt Stanley.
And to what?
The Energy Commission as an alternate.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Got some more members of the public, if you want to open public input again.
All right, we'll take a 34-minute recess. Swansea Board of Selectmen's meeting today, February 7th, is called back to order. Chief Goncalves will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, and to the Constitution of the United States, under God, in the name of the Constitution of America.
Thank you, Chief.
Be a lot of muting here. Good evening, good to see you. Nice crowd here. Welcome to the 2023 deliberative session. Thank you for taking the time to attend, and I'm the town moderator, Bruce Tetro. We're broadcasting tonight's meeting live over Zoom, so, and it's being recorded, although to participate, vote, or make motions, people must be physically present. Some department heads may be participating over Zoom. The seat meeting is the first session of this year's annual town meeting. The purpose of this session is to determine the form of warrant articles that will be presented to voters at the polls on March 14th. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to recognize some of the town officials and employees helping, helping us out this evening. First, I'd like to recognize the supervisors of the checklists, Linda Faulkner and Lee Dunham. Those present at tonight's sessions should have checked in before. It says coming upstairs, but we've decided to do it upstairs instead. If you have not checked in, please do so now. Requests for yes and no ballots must be submitted prior to an articles vote in writing with the signatures of five voters who are present. If a paper ballot vote is called for, I will go over the rules at that time. Town offices and officials, Selectmen, Bill Hotwalkley, the chair, Ken Colby, and Sly Karasinski. Town administrator, Michael Branley, and town clerk, Heather Estrella. Hey. Okay, police chief is Joe Gonzalez. Did I get it right? Thank you. Fire chief, Gil Gould. Public Works Director, Joe DeRusso. Solid Waste Manager, Josh Whipple. There he is. Finance Director, Teresa Launer. And I haven't seen Paul yet, but Paul Schering is usually the assistant moderator. Okay, the first session meeting rules. Handouts, which include the warrant articles and budget items to be considered at this evening's meeting, are available in the back of the hall. Going to establish a few guidelines similar to those that we've used at past meetings for this evening's sessions. Before asking a question or making a statement, please make your way, I guess we don't have the second microphone tonight, or are you gonna have to come up here? Good luck. Make your way to the microphone and identify yourself for the record. This is mainly because we are Zooming the meeting. Other people outside are listening as well as it's, the whole thing's being recorded, so we need to have your, your voice so that it can be recorded. So you need to announce your, announce your name when you come up. You have to, if you want to speak as well as the first person, you can get up and stand in line, but you also have to wait for them to finish. And by general rule, non-voters cannot speak. Do we have any non-voters that are down, not registered or town residents? You cannot speak without permission of the meeting. As at past meetings, moderator will allow town staff to provide information or address questions which may arise during the course of the meeting. We don't have non-voters, so we don't have to worry about them. Running debate will not be allowed. Remarks and questions should go through the moderator. Everyone should treat each other respectfully and courteously. If during the meeting you disagree with the ruling of the moderator, you may request that the House be polled. This is the voter's meeting, meaning your meeting, and the voters may overrule the moderator. With respect to motions for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider will be, too many considers, a motion will be reconsidered, will be considered in order if made 10 minutes of declaring the results of the original vote. Understand that? Good for you. We will be projecting the wording for each article and we'll forego reading them. When we get to an article, it will be projected and I will ask for a motion in a second, but then open the floor for discussion and amendments. Any amendments to an article will need to be submitted to the moderator in writing and amendments will be voted on one at a time. Amended article will be put on the projector and that will be debated and voted on. Additional discussions and amendments will then be allowed. When voters are done with amendments and discussion, I will then call for, for the vote. Finally, I will declare the results of the vote. We will move forward to the next item of business. State law requires all articles on the warrant to be voted by official ballot, so motion to pass over or postpone indefinitely are beyond the authority of the first session and will be ruled out of order. Article one is the election of officers and article two is zoning amendments, which do not need to be discussed tonight. Our first item of business will be article three, which is now on display on the screen. Article three, see if the town will vote and raise appropriate, appropriate as an operating budget. Except for $7,425,000. Should this article be defeated, and you can read all that, but it shall be, the default budget shall be $6,864,706, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, 10, and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget.
Mr. Moderator, I'll make a motion to move the question.
We have a motion to move and been seconded to move article three. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article four is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate money to be placed in the following expendable trust and capital reserve accounts of the town. There, all up there. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Good. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $590,000 to be placed in the following expendable trust and capital reserve accounts of the town.
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Article five is, we'll move on to the ballot. Article six, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $261,009, yeah, $261,976 to be placed in the following capital reserve accounts of the town. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion and move the question.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the article, by aye. And opposed, nay. Article six is accepted. Article seven, to see if the town will vote and raise, to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 to be placed in the fire station's capital reserve fund. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing?
Charge break up the party, Dan Spolveda, Swansea resident. So it looks like this is a, we're storing up money to start, we're saving up money for offsetting costs of a future build. Is this what this article's for?
Yes, it's for the future fire station fund and also to repair and improve the existing fire stations.
So my question to you is how do we expect to have this pass if we can't get the original fire station passed?
Well, the last three years, we've had a majority vote. We just haven't reached the 60% threshold to secure a bond. So if financing changes in the future, hopefully we'll be able to get the financing for a future fire station.
So we know that the interest rates and the bond yields are going up, right? So that's gonna cost a lot more and that window of opportunity has gone away. So in my mind's eye, in the reality, this is just gonna go to updating our current facilities.
Right, and we've used some of that money already to put the addition on the Station 3 over here across the street. We've added in facilities so that the members can wash their gear and decontaminate. So we, we're proceeding forward with our plan to make the fire stations viable. Right now, we need to get the Station 2 out of the basement of the town hall and eventually that day will come, you know, so we just want to be able to have the funds available to go forward with it.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Seeing none. We've called for the, called for the vote. All those in favor of Article 7, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Article 7 is accepted. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $22,000, such sum representing six months' funding for overnight on-call standby stipends for the fire department. If this appropriation is approved, it is the intent of the selectmen to include full year funding for this coverage estimated at $44,000 in the 2024 operating budget. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Okay, no discussion. We'll call the question. All those in favor of Article 8, by, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 8 moves forward. Article nine, see if the town will vote to amend the following capital reserve funds to designate the Board of Selectmen as agents to expend in place of the sewer commissioners. Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's moved and seconded. Any discussion, explanation? No? This was voted on, yeah, last year. Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Article nine is moving forward. Article 10, see if the town shall vote to re-adopt the provision of 72:28-B in accordance with RSA 7227-A for all veterans' credit at $500 per year and to re-adopt the provisions of RSA 7228 Roman numeral II in advance with RSA 7227-A for an optional veterans' credit at $500 per year. If re-adopted and approved, this article's will take effect for the 2023 property tax year. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion's moved and seconded. Discussion?
Well, I'd rather you didn't. I'm David Stinson, 23 Depot Road in Swansea. I am a veteran of the United States Navy and there are a number of veterans here as well as in our town. One of all of you that are veterans, stand up just so we can acknowledge you. We, we are also a Purple Heart community because we found there are 27 Purple Heart recipients who live in the town of Swansea. Essentially what happened here is this was how we were operating before and the state passed a new law as it says, and it came up with a smaller amount than what Swansea has been giving the veterans as a rebate from their property tax. This essentially just retains the status quo of what we've been doing. All I want to say is that most veterans do not get a veteran's pension. It's only those who served over 20 years and probably there are some of us who did that, but I think it's a, it's a, it's an important acknowledgement of their service to our country and community and I urge the passing of this warrant. I am not one of them. There's a technicality, my, my commission was reserved, so I don't, I don't have a DD 214, which is what you have to have to get this. If you were mobilized or if you're an active component, you, you qualify. But I don't know how many people in town do apply for it. Does anybody know?
Quick math says about 500 members of the community.
That's more than we have in the American Legion post, but.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of warrant article 10, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 11, to see if the town shall vote to amend the town's solar tax exemption under RSA 72, 72:61-64-inclusive, which provide an optional property tax exemption for, from the property's assessed value. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion was made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, we'll call it. Okay.
I'm Scott Self, I'm in town here. And I'm just wondering if that pertains to just residential homes or is that like the solar farm growing up over here and the one over by the airport? Residential, I thought it was, but I wanted to clarify. Real property, but that's real property over there that it's ending up on, but it's only residential property. Thank you. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll vote on Article 11. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and Article 11 is approved. Is there any further business for the, you're going down, for the town's deliberative session Seeing none, entertain a motion?
I will.
Whoa, wait a minute. What's your name? Steve Biddle.
Seconded.
And it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Thank you all for coming.